Hey, good morning, everyone. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen of the Town in New Canaan for Tuesday, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. This is a hybrid meeting. Kathleen is on virtually from Asia somewhere.
Cambodia.
Cambodia. And it is a hybrid meeting. We have other people on remotely. Any of our presentations? Oh, Tucker's. Okay, Tucker's just out today. But joining us remotely and any of our presenters on? Everybody's here. Tiger's here. Okay. First item on our agenda. Actually, first of all, we need to amend the agenda to add an item on Waving House Lupe Stone Walkway. If I move, we amend the agenda to add this item and Tiger can do it after his other walkways.
Second here.
All favor. Aye.
Aye.
Yeah. First item on the agenda is the minutes of our last meeting on October thirty-one. Any comments or corrections?
Just one comment and actually probably also requesting an amendment to the agenda. So as you recall, I had brought up the issue of part-time employees at when we discussed the minutes last in our last meeting. So I'd like the minutes to reflect that. And I'd also like to suggest that we amend the today's agenda to have a discussion about our practices and policies on public part-time employees. So I'd like to make a motion that we add that to the agenda today.
I second the motion.
We can have a brief discussion. We don't have. We can't. We can't. Can't discuss a policy today other than. Okay, I'll be. You know, I sent you an email about the town attorney's advice on that.
Yes, thank you.
All in favor of many of the agenda? Aye.
Aye.
As far as the minutes of Kathleen, you know, we I intentionally did not send you the list that you asked for because of the conversation with the town attorney and our discussion we have to have about if we want to have a policy change, but so I have no problem with the ministry reflecting that you you raised the topic of part-time employee hiring policy. So.
Great, thank you.
That change I move we approve the minutes as mentioned.
I'll second.
All favor. Aye. Public comments. Members of the public are welcome to write comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. Comments submitted electronically should be sent to B O S distribution at newcanac t dot gov and we'll read them before the meeting end. Any members of the public wish to make comments today? We have a number of town employees here, but no members of the public. Okay. Actually, Chief, are you? We're going to do the other P D item at the end of the agenda. So why don't we defer this item until we get if we decide to go into executive session on the other item? So we'll defer number three on Owen Park light posts until until that discussion. You know, we probably will be another forty-five minutes before we get there. Joe's our Grensky Police Department Building Edition and Renovations Project. Chief, if you want to join us for this discussion or why don't you give a brief update on where we stand with the renovation project?
Good morning. Yes. So as far as the update on the police department. So the architect, he was contracted, they're leased and they were funded through the bid phase. They proceeded to the design development phase. So we're going from the schematic, which are basically pictures of the drawing and identifying the space needs to now we have the design team putting in the the engineering team, putting in the kind of the nuts and bolts for the overall project. Their process of finishing up their design team, the civil, mechanical, electrical plumbing engineers. The town is marking all the site utilities, verifying to the extent possible the as built and everything associated with the ambulance corps. The Humes team was out there this week. They were surveying the site in preparation for their drawings. And we've contracted with a surveyor to get the overall work starting with, you know, that we were going to be required for planning and zoning. This kinetic design documents were sent to land use directors in the fire marshal's office to look for any showstoppers. We haven't heard anything back on any showstoppers. And an R F Q was sent out for the owner's project manager, which is why we're here today. Interviews were conducted. And I'm here to recommend that we go into a contract with the SLAM collaborative. Is there any other questions? We're going to kind of move to the agenda.
How many? How many bidders were there?
For for this?
For the owner.
For the owner's project rap, we send it out to to four to four packages to four vendors, and we received three packages back. And we interviewed three contractors. So we issued a R F Q to four firms who received three qualification packages. We interviewed three firms. And the police department building committee selected SLAM Construction Services at the November tenth meeting. Committee meeting. These services include basically they're responsible for each project activity, planning, execution, control, enclosure. They manage the product schedule, preparation of the estimates for the next two phases of drawing development, budget control, reporting functions, perform constructability review, assess the value. Assist with the value analysis and value engineering. And they put out the R F Q for the construction manager, which is very important. They'll manage that whole bid process with the town. And we'll get to the point where we can issue or get set up for a guaranteed maximum price with a construction manager. So that's what this operation gets us.
And what's what's the timing generally speaking with respect to the entire project?
Right now, the bid phase is scheduled to end July fifth. That's just an arbitrary date. The way the schedule runs out, obviously, we don't want to have a July fifth. And that would make the project for for construction would be basically the next eighteen months, two years. So we'd be finished in the fall of twenty twenty-five is what the current schedule shows. So there's other things that these this contractor does include. The D P W will still manage the soft costs like surveying temporary P D design, the relocation, the management of the environmental, radio communications, geotechnical, special inspections, technical consultants, et cetera. So we still have a a lot of work that the Department of Public Works is.
All the relocation will be on our nickel.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep. So the Department of Public Works is requesting to enter into a contract with SLAM Construction Services in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand six hundred and sixty plus a contingency of twelve thousand three hundred and forty for a total cost of one hundred and twenty. These funds are currently available and the contract is it will be with the town attorney for to be finalized. It would be the same contract basically that we that was used at Saks Middle School. So it's a fairly recent contract that we're just refreshing.
Any questions?
Yeah, Joe, thank you. Actually, that was my question. We have used them before, right? It was for the Saks transaction or Saks building.
Yeah, they were and they were very happy with them at Saks.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And then the second one is what was the difference between the first and second bid? This one being under twenty, I guess. What was the difference of the second bid?
We went with a request for qualification. So everyone kind of came back with their own presentation of what they what they wanted for staff, but the unit prices for the staff and their services were the most competitive per hour. And they were all very similar in cost.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any further questions?
None here.
I move we approve the question of Public Works and the Police Department to enter into a contract with SLAM Construction Services as described by Joe for a total of one hundred twenty thousand dollars, which includes a contingency. Do I have a second?
Got it.
Discussion. All in favor. Aye. Thank you, Chief. Chief, facet. You're on deck. Interlocal agreement. But this was actually going to the town council.
What's that?
Are we recommending it to the town council for Wednesday?
Yeah, I guess it's a guess what I'm asking the Board of Selectmen to do. Good morning, everyone, is to approve our interlocal agreement to go to town council to approve the first selectment to sign the interlocal agreement. Once it's done, this is an agreement between Fairfield County hazardous incident response team and fourteen municipalities. The agreement has been the current agreement has been in effect since nineteen ninety-nine. What the team is trying with, as you'll see, is F shirt in the agreement. What they're attempting to do is eventually establish a five oh one a five oh one C. So the the town, the Fairfield County will be its own entity, and we are coming off the books of the town of Westport where all our funds are handled right now, and it allows us to do a lot, allows the team to do a lot of other stuff such as solicit for grants and manage the grants and accept donations, which we cannot do at this point through the town of Westport. So that's
And all the other towns are already.
There are a few towns that have already signed. I believe Weston signed Derek. Darian was in process. I forgot who I might have been the first one to sign already. So it's going through the fourteen legislative bodies at this time.
Questions for Albie?
Albie, how many people on our staff are actually assigned to this particular contract? Is there anybody who's specifically in in the in this particular phase and that's responsible for hazardous incident response?
Yeah, as far as the operations of the team, we have four firefighters, different ranks that are assigned to the to the team. I'm still an active member within the team, and we have one member on the fire department that is a communications specialist who is the communication side of the team and one active police officer that's on the communications team also.
Thank you.
Questions on here?
I have no heard the questions. I move we approve the request from the fire department to authorize an agreement between the town in the Canaan and the Fairfield County Hazardous Incident Response Team as described by Albie. Do I have a second?
Second.
Early discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Emma, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, Jim Rogers and Tiger Man. Morning, Jim.
Here we are today. She requests the approval to have and we're going to pump the valve and install our second clarifier drive. We're just in the process of finishing up the first drive now, and we have pumped it out. Has done the first one. They were at a low bid when we went out to bid for the first drive. We did not go out to bid for the second drive. We feel that we came, we had not quite a few problems. There's some specific things that has to be done during the installation. So I'd like to have them do it. Their price for them is sixty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-five. When we went out to bid back in two thousand twenty-one, the second high bidder was sixty-one thousand. So we're in within the ballpark. Other than that, they did a fantastic job. We'd like to keep them to finish up. There was like, there's an eighteen-week lead time for the equipment. Actually, it took a year to get the first drive. So, you know, as soon as we could get get it ordered, the better off.
Questions for Jim?
None here.
I have none. We're going to have an announcement soon, or is that where's Tiger? Next, what is likely? Okay. Okay, all right, well. We'll see Jim in two weeks and Nick. I move we approve the request from the public works to enter to a contract with New England Pump and Valve Company in the amount of thirty sixty-three thousand seven twenty-five for the installation of a new number two clarifier at the wastewater treatment facility. Do I have a second?
Second here.
For the discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Hey, Playhouse Design Building Consulting Services, Mr. Osman and Tiger Man.
Did you miss that seven?
Oh, I did. And that's you and John.
John here.
John's not here.
We'll do the spot up bill. We'll do the tennis court lights first at Mead Park. Is this replacement?
This is a replacement, right? So we went out to our preferred lighting project contractor of Musco. Musco did a fantastic job on the lights at at Dunning. If you've been able to see a game, see the see the new lights, but they're they're fantastic. So we went to Musco, asked them for a quote for the replacement of the lights at Mead Park Tennis Court seven and eight. They came back with a price of twenty-six thousand eight eighty-nine. We added a fifteen percent contingency for a total of thirty thousand eight eighty-nine. This will be for a removal and complete installation of the new sports cluster system with total light control with LEDs should give us a savings on our on our usage as well. As I mentioned, they've done excellent work, not only at 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 Dunning, but every single light system that we have in town is a Muscat light system. So we'd like to continue our our relationship with Musco, and we recommend that this this contract go forward.
Questions, Tiger?
How many lights are we talking about, Tiger?
I think there's four.
And this is going to have the quality that we have at Dunning, same kind of.
Yeah, it won't have the light show.
But they're all moving to LEDs anyway, right?
All moves to LEDs, right?
What percentage of of our lights in town that we're responsible for are LED?
Second set.
What's that?
This is the second set. We've got softball lights and others that are that are not yet going to be changed over.
That's all right. Well, your tennis court lights get up here.
Yeah, it's all good. They skipped a couple items. So you
Oh, okay.
You got you got sure to. Question was, how many do we have LED so far?
How many?
How many?
What percentage?
What percentage of of lights or?
Of the fields.
Of the fields, just Dunning.
Right.
Dunning is the only one that's LED.
Yeah, so this would be the second. This would be the second. Others, they've got to go.
And the ones that the new fields were never LED because they're more expensive.
Way a lot way back then, way more expensive. So yeah, it makes sense to do it at that point in time. Yeah.
Right back in two thousand and seven, when we installed them originally, they were a lot, lot more expensive. We did do an analysis at the time, but the cost was prohibitive.
Okay.
It's a great question. Yeah, expect the useful life of these new lights and and how old were the ones that were replacing?
How old? How old are the ones we're replacing? Was that the question?
Yes, and the expected life of the new lights.
I could tell you that they're over twenty-five years old, only because that's how long I've worked for the town. The the new life expectancy would probably be at least twenty years for the new fixtures.
We have
Does this cover the pickleball courts as well?
No, it does not. This is just for Court seven and eight. We are looking at the potential to put in lights at Pickle, but that that would be in it. That would be a separate project.
Okay.
Do we have a maintenance contract with Musco where they come in or they replace the bulbs or do we do?
We do have maintenance contracts with them. Like for the the Little League foot fields, the base, New Canaan Baseball has that contracted. Yes, but it's not just to replace balls. So it's other other things depending on what it is. Some
Baseball pays the pays for the lights.
Being in baseball pays for the service contracts for the lights.
Wow. Good to know. Any further questions?
Not here.
I move we approve the request from Parks Recreation Department to enter into a contract with Musco Sports Lighting in the amount of ninety thousand eight eighty-nine, which includes a contingency as described by Tiger and John. Second.
Second here.
For the discussion, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, John. Thank you, Tiger.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you.
Tiger, why don't you stay here with Bill on the Playhouse?
Yeah. This this next item is a little unique. It is, in essence, a consulting service, no construction at present for the interior renovation of the Playhouse Theater. Right now, speaking with the architect, we're fifteen percent done with the plan set. They have their first meeting with the structural engineer this morning because there'll be some structural changes inside the theater itself. And it's our feeling to bring in Alden Bailey, which is our would be our preferred contractor for this work to have him work with the architect and the engineer to try to help fast track the design process and then also shorten down the bidding process since he'll be able to quote us price prices for each facet of the design so we can keep it tab on the construction costs, specifically since we'll be in partnership with Cinema Lab for some of the items. We wanted to make sure that we had a a good feel for all the all the costs associated with it. So our feeling is to bring in Alden Bailey and help us through that design situation, the the design phases, and then, as I mentioned, shorten down the construction, the bidding phase, and then be able to go right into construction thereby trying to be able to open up the theater a little bit earlier than than our current schedule is. So we feel it's a it's a very good move to hire Alden Bailey at twenty-five thousand dollars. We are looking at having a more considerable savings on the backside than that twenty-five thousand. So we think it'll pay for itself to have them come in and work with the designer and the and the engineers through this through this phase of of designs that we can bring it bring it forward at that point in time for approval to the other town bodies.
So did you? Did you talk about having getting a credit for this twenty-five on the second?
There is, right. There is a credit mentioned inside the inside the proposal that we'll get a twenty-five thousand dollar credit off the construction at the end. And that, but I'm also looking at the fact that they'll be saving us not only time and money associated with being able to help us through this design phase. Sometimes it's very nice to have someone with a construction bent on the design team to be able to tell you the constructibility and the cost thereof, you know, of certain changes that you want to make.
So this is a new. We've never really done this before, design build. We've never, we've never really done this before.
We've never done this before. This is this is new for us, but in the end, as you mentioned, it's a zero cost to the town since it'll be a twenty-five thousand dollar cost upfront and a twenty-five thousand dollars savings on the on the project in the end. But we feel it's a, given the circumstances that we're in, given the fact that we have a partnership with Cinema Lab, and we want to make sure that we understand all the costs and they understand all the costs before we go forward. We think it's a very good idea to to move forward with this type of consulting service.
Speaking of similar lab, and this is probably a question, Kevin, for you. I mean, where are they with their private placement efforts?
They're doing very well. I think they're approaching the two million dollar mark. And, you know, as you, as we announced on Friday afternoon or Monday yesterday, that we signed the lease on Friday. We have a great relationship with Cinema Lab. They're doing well in their other theaters, and I think we this design, working with them on the design, obviously, the as people can see, the outdoor work is being done, the exterior renovation, and that's all on us based upon the theater fund we had. But the interior work really requires maximum cooperation with them to design something that they believe will be a unique and respectful renovation of the interior, both the the auditoriums and the lobby and the second floor. So
And this is nice about this approach, that there's going to be no surprises at the end. We're going to value engineer as we go right through this. And if we run into that problem at that point, we're not losing time. We can relook at it, reevaluate engineer, redesign if we have to.
Plus, the Alden Bailey has done great work for us at Wavingy House. They're about to start the bathroom project. So being in town to do two projects, they did the work over two twenty to remove the the stairway. So therefore, we have a lot of confidence in.
We think we have, yeah, we have an excellent architect with Carl Rothbart and his firm, and I think we have an excellent contractors. We have a very good team in place. I think it's a, I think it's a good move for what we want to do here at the Playhouse.
Right. And we we expect we're on budget with this project, although we have a bit of a understanding with Cinema Lab that if we go over budget, they'll be sharing to some extent with that. So it's a good partnership. And I think everybody, anyway, Kathleen or Nick, do you have questions?
None here.
Okay, good. I move we approve the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Alden Bailey Restoration in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars as described by Tiger and Bill for the New Canaan Playhouse. Second.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Tiger.
Thank you.
The next item is the power, power lines to the Playhouse.
Actually, the next item is outdoor dining, but let's where is where is that?
Oh, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jumping ahead.
Yeah, number nine. This only tail is that we have to excavate about a hundred and forty feet up Elm Street to the underground, the fault there where the transformer is, the network transformer. And this will be just bringing new conduits to the Playhouse. There's only one in there now, and it's very, very old. So we have to bring three in. And you know, Andy is very familiar with the earth all around there. He just did the sewer line. He knows it's in the ground. So we'd like to have approval to contract Lanny to go ahead and install these conduits, get them in the ground. Now we'll also had also previously received approval due to water lines to move forward with that. Once this is all done, we're done this tree stuff, Tiger could then finish the sidewalks to his tree and mess goes away.
And hopefully it doesn't snow before this is done. So.
We did seek an alternate quote, but Peter Lonnie was the was substantially lower than the other. So we feel confident going forward with this price. This is an excellent price for the amount of work that's involved for a hundred and forty feet through Elm Street, which is not only a couple layer, a couple inches of asphalt, but it's also nine inches of concrete. So the entire road is actually a concrete road. So it's a substantial amount of work involved in in bringing these new lines to to the Playhouse itself.
Okay, questions on this?
None here.
Okay, I move we approve the request of Public Works to enter the country with Peter Lonnie, Inc. for sixteen thousand nine eighty as described by Tiger and Bill for the electrical connection underground conduits to be done for the Playhouse.
Second here.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, yes, you know, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Keep get keep moving on this project. Otto joining. Now we get to who's going to join us. Tucker, you're involved in this and as well as
I think Tiger was going to present for us this morning or at least get us started.
The rest of the land use departments are actually with the library this morning.
So obviously, you know, P and Z, a town planner has involvement in this as well as the Health Department as well as others. And we really decided to bring this to the Board of Selectmen since we're about to end the outdoor dining season, and we want to make sure that the merchants and the restaurants get a clear message from the town. So the selection are really undertaking this. So Tiger, go ahead.
So what this is, is in essence notifying the downtown merchants that we'll be removing the barricades on the Tuesday after Thanksgiving. We're asking that they remove all of their tables and chairs from the street itself, not the sidewalk, but from the street on the Monday after the Thanksgiving holiday, and then we'll come in Tuesday morning and remove the barricades. And then, essence, the street will be open through the holiday season for it'll free up some additional parking for the merchants themselves through the holiday season. What we are allowing, which is different than what the what we're proposing to allow is which is slightly different from P and Z's code right now, which is basically outdoor dining is removed at the end of October. There is a law that sunsets next April that allows outdoor dining in this in the throughout without a without a pause. We're notifying everyone that they can keep their tables and chairs provided that there's a four-foot wide pedestrian walkway on the sidewalk so they can use that additional space on the sidewalk that we've created. Uh, sorry. Through the holidays and through into next season, and then we'll be looking to replace the barricades sometime in March. And then work towards finishing the bump outs. And at that point in time, hopefully, the barricades will be removed and the street will go back to itself. But this is just notifying each of the merchants that of our plans that will be taking down the barricades, but then they'll be coming back after the holidays, after the winter season. And the restaurants will be allowed to utilize a sidewalk through that entire timeframe, provided that there's a a walkway, a four-foot wide accessible walkway on the sidewalk.
And I think the retailers and the vendors will appreciate this.
Correct.
Of course, all of this begs the question, you know, outdoor dining is here to stay. Of course, all of this begs the question, you know, outdoor dining is here to stay. Probably forever. You know, and it's it's not just COVID. I mean, obviously, we had success with forestry before COVID. And in my mind, and Tiger, you and I have had this conversation, I mean, you know, should we look at? Having a continual bump out, so to speak, on Elm Street. You know, I could see it extending all the way. On the north side of the street. I'm would be interested in. You know, understand, I know we're going to pick up some extra spots, I think. On the south side of the street, maybe the north side of the street too, with respect to the curbing. For the handicapped access. Is that is that correct?
So at present, we're looking at the possibility of, excuse me, extending the bump outs almost in essence from. From Main Street to Park Street, the entire length. The Police Commission asked that that same question when I was presenting a separate item there last month. So we are looking at that possibility. There also is the possibility of stopping. At the at the alleyway or the driveway next to Chef Louis and allowing some parking there. If we were to go end to end. The we're looking at the possibility of twenty three spaces being removed. You know, in addition to what was been removed now. But then there is the thought to shorten down the amount of the bump out and gain some spaces back. If we were to go from Chef Louis, leave parking from Chef Louis to. To the corner of Park Street, that's an additional five spaces. And if we came in a little bit and stopped in front of uncorked to allow the. The first disabled space and then possibly one more, we'd gain two backs. We'd gain seven back out of the twenty three. We'd lose a net of sixteen. Then we can try to look at the south side to see whether or not there's some additional savings there. We are gaining five back.
On the south side.
South side. Because there was an overall loss possibly of twenty eight minus five got me to the twenty three. But we have to construct the ones on the south side to gain those five back. And then if we were to look at other areas, we might be able to gain. A couple of few more. We wouldn't get the entire sixteen back, but that's the analysis that we're providing, that we're performing right now. And then at that point in time, we'll have to go back to the various bodies, since we had only asked for this stretch. If we ask for more, we'll have to go back to the various bodies and ask for. That that type.
Would it make sense to, you know, to add a sign someplace on Elm Street, additional parking in rear? You know, go this way. Up around, you know.
That's a great point. So, yes, and what we are working with, there's three projects basically at the the Playhouse. There's a. The exterior is basically maintenance work on the outside. The interior renovation, and then there's work in the alley. To provide. Rampage, pedestrian ramping from the Playhouse lot, the Park Street lot down and through the alley. To Elm Street, which is something we don't have now. Right now, we have a series of steps. So in essence, if we were to provide, you know, some wayfinding signage to say, hey, additional parking in the rear, and we think that a lot of people will probably. Utilize that now if there was a nicer access way. Right now, you have to pass by a couple of dumpsters. It's not.
And there are people who don't even know that that exists, who have lived in this town.
We found that out just recently that there are still some people that don't realize that there's parking in the back.
And there's also the white Buffalo.
Correct.
Stairs, which is another way to get onto Elm Street without having to go.
Correct. So we think that we add some wayfinding signs that that would help lessen the blow of losing some of the spaces on itself. But the overall gain would be the fact of the increased sidewalk and the increased walkability and the safety thereof. I think that would be a.
And and PD and fire are okay with this, presumably, if we were to do this.
The Police Commission asked us to look at it in essence with the thought of of that, yes, they would approve it, but we haven't gotten approval from them yet.
Right, you know, Nick, we're really getting beyond the scope of this agenda item today. We we've encouraged, we're going to encourage P and Z to to look at revising their outdoor dining. Regulations and.
Sorry, I brought it up, Kevin, so.
No, 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 I'm just saying, we got a long agenda today and. This is a large topic for for downtown with the Police Commission and P and Z, the primary bodies that deal with this, but with the advice of our. Our town departments, but I really, you know. I don't have any particular agenda about that outdoor dining, and I'd like to have the Planning and Zoning Commission function on this.
Works for me.
Kathleen, any comments on this particular? We're not really making much of a policy change. We're just, it's within our discretion as to what we do within this. Period that the state has extended outdoor dining through April, but. Our town departments are in agreement that we need to. Not go through the winter as much as some people might like to with outdoor dining. And end it before the snow flies, hopefully, and and reopen in. Mid-March and. By then, hopefully, planning zoning will have a revised outdoor dining policy, and the police department may function on additional. Additional bump outs.
Can I just have? Can I, sorry, I just had one question. I I certainly understand for the holiday season and wanting to get the parking and so forth. But I kind of see that through maybe January. Is there any reason why you extend that to? March before your allow outdoor dining again?
Can I can I jump in here for a minute? Maybe I can answer some of that, Kathleen. Outdoor dining will still continue through March. It will just be on the sidewalks. We just won't have the tables in the street. Obviously, the weather in the winter is obviously something that we have to be concerned about. But this really came about at a request of several merchants who said that, you know, they they appreciate that the outdoor dining does attract people to town. But they really felt during the holidays that it was important to get back as much parking as possible. So this was our response. You know, with weather being cold, it is nice. Some people will still sit outside and they will all still have that. Opportunity to offer outside dining. It will just shorten up the amount of tables that they have, and they will have to make sure this four foot. Wide pathway is is always accessible.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, if there's no further. Questions, I will move approve the. Temporary. Provision as tablets regarding outdoor dining at Elm Street. From November twenty ninth through March or mid-March two thousand twenty three. In approved location, provided the four foot. Wide minimum pedestrian pathway is maintained. So do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Bye.
Bye.
Thank you, Tiger.
So this next item is the purchase of both treated and straight salt. They're in two separate requests, only because they're two separate materials. We are part of the Capital Region Council Governments. We we tell them what our our. Annual usage is, there's a minimum purchase, and then you double that for your for your maximum purchase. Our minimum purchase for treated salt is fifteen hundred tons. Our maximum purchase that we're requesting right now is three thousand tons. They go out to bid for us. The low bid for our region was Morton Salt, which was what we've been utilizing in the past. The unit price this year is ninety five dollars and fifty five cents per ton. So the purchase amount for us at three thousand tons comes to two hundred and eighty six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. We have funds currently available on the highway operating budget for the treated salt. On the straight salt side, very similar situation, only we purchase a very minimal amount, hundred and fifty tons. This is. For use by the Parks Department mainly on our sidewalks. For that that unit price is ninety two fifty two a ton for a total purchase of thirteen thousand, eight seventy eight. This unit price has jumped up so much that now we're actually above that ten thousand dollar threshold. Normally, the first selectman approves the 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 straight salt purchase, and we haven't brought it to this body prior.
So what are the percentage increases for these?
So straight salt went from somewhere in the the sixty range to the ninety range. And the treated salt. Specifically, last year, we paid seventy four seventeen. And this year, we're paying ninety five fifty five. So there's a market increase. They had been quite low for the past since fiscal eighteen. They had been quite low in the seventy three, seventy one, seventy, sixty two, and fiscal twenty one, seventy four, and twenty two, and now ninety five.
I know we've built a lot of inflation into this year's budget, but we have this covered with them.
We did not anticipate that. To be quite honest. That's a market jump.
What do we, what do we anticipate?
We anticipated the very similar pricing that we had prior, which if you can imagine, the, you know, we usually go on a three year average. Three year average for that was about seventy dollars a ton.
Right.
So even a five year average would have brought us to a seventy dollar per ton usage, not a ninety five.
So three thousand times twenty bucks.
Exactly.
Great for a light winter. I think.
No questions.
No questions? I move. I move the approve the two requests from the Department of Public Works to for the. Purchase from Morton Salt of treated salt. As described by Tiger and straight salt, as described by Tiger. For the amounts on our tablets. Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? I.
Hi.
unanimous?
Thank you. This next item is along the same vein. It's actually for our liquid product, our liquid deicing product through innovative surface solutions. For the liquid ice be gone. This year's price is a dollar sixty a ton. Requesting approximately twelve thousand gallons for nineteen thousand, two hundred dollar purchase. This unit price, they've been holding steady pretty close throughout. They've been in around the dollar fifty range for quite some time. So there's a modest increase in this price. But that our requested gallon is based upon our our previous usage for the past several years.
Questions, Tiger?
None here.
I move, I move or approve the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Surface Solutions for the purchase of twelve thousand gallons of liquid ice be gone at the dollar sixty per gallon. For total cost of nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars. Second.
Second here.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Low boy truck purchase.
This next is a replacement of an existing low boy truck, a twenty thirteen. Might as well with the first three items from all yours.
I keep looking. I'm like, you want to come up the.
So this next item is a purchase of a truck for the Highway Department. It's a replacement of a twenty thirteen Chevy Silverado thirty five hundred that has currently eighty thousand, eight hundred and seventy six miles on it. It fought one hundred and forty five snowstorms, snowstorms plus hurricanes and windstorms. Most did a really nice job working through this quote and. In essence, beating up the. Beating up the vendor for a better trade in value for our truck. So the purchase price is seventy eight thousand, seven sixty five twenty. From MHQ. Less a trade in of fifteen thousand dollars for a total of sixty three thousand, seven sixty five twenty. The monies are available in the Highway Department is for a Ford F fifty dump truck twenty twenty two.
I'm I'm sorry, this is from.
Gangris, that's right. Sorry, I have it written in there the one.
Rengras.
Gang Gangris.
Jang Ford, right. I had it right on the top of the menu, not on the memo, not on the bottom, sorry.
So we get delivery.
Who knows? Have no idea. It literally is, but buying a truck right now is completely. Changed.
Right.
It's. We have two EVs that we'd like to purchase for the land use departments, and at present, when we speak to Christie called Carl Chevy the other day, they still haven't made them yet for us, and we we asked back in June. May, so we're still waiting for those to actually bring the item to you to to purchase. They don't have the.
It's a year to get a suburban too, according to. Those folks.
Any questions about this truck? I move or approve the request from Public Works to enter into contract, Grand Gang Gang?
Jangers Ford.
Gangris Ford. An amount of. Sixty three thousand, seven sixty five. After a trade in for fifteen thousand dollars for. Two thousand twenty two, maybe it'll be a two thousand twenty three by the time we get this, right? Two thousand twenty two. Ford four fifty dump truck is described by Tiger and Mo Sacre. Second.
Second.
For the discussion.
Thank you.
All in favor? Thanks, most.
Thank you.
Any any snow forecast?
Yes, they had a little bit of a scare, but no. Right now, they gave a, they just gave a storm warning for Litchfield County, but not not for down here.
Okay. Other one, Tiger, you have the whole.
I'm sorry. The the next item is our annual downfall screening and MS four permit. This is a consulting service that we have with tie and bond for our MS four permit through the DEP. It's our MS fours Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Annual Permit and Report. So they will. Go forward and perform the report, but they also help us adhere to the goals of our of our permit, and then they do our annual. Stormwater tracking as far as testing of our outfalls and to make sure that there's no illicit discharge. So the main focus is any illicit discharge detection and. Evaluation. So this their price is the exact same as last year. Broken out into several tasks, so we'd like to continue this agreement with tie and bond for fourteen thousand dollars. To help us with our MS four reporting. Required reporting from the DEP.
And we haven't had any problems in the past.
We have one area of concern right now that we have to look into. We think that there might be a cross connection between. Several systems, so we have to make sure that it's a. A closed system. So we'll do one more set of testing and then go back out and try to evaluate this one area. But for the most part, we've been doing quite well. We also compare our results to the results that are done by Harbor Watch that the Conservation Commission does, since Harbor Watch comes into town and does some, so we compare the two, and if they have some concerns. We try to evaluate, and if we have some concerns, we've actually asked them to evaluate as well. So it's a nice partnership between the two firms and the two bodies, the Conservation Commission and DPW.
Tiger, does this appear on our website? And if so, where?
It's in the engineering. The report is in is under engineering. Our last annual report, it it stays on the in draft form for forty five days, and then it gets approved. So our last annual report should be there. Highlighted on the on the far right.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Now, for the questions, I move, we approve the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with tie and bond at the amount of fourteen thousand dollars. To conduct the state required municipal separate storm sewer system MS four two thousand twenty two annual report. Second.
Second.
For the discussion? All in favor? I.
Thank you. This this next item is a continuation of a contract we have with New England Paving for fifty thousand dollars for additional localized repairs in town. We've had certain areas that have come to attention. Specifically in some of our parking lots surrounding our accessible spaces. So I wanted to ensure that I had enough money in the contract. I don't envision utilizing the the remainder of this money, but. Like to have some additional, so we can have them go out and correct some of the areas that that have been brought to us as being deficient. They've done excellent work for us in the past. They. We feel that it's a. Very large savings to the town. They've been working for us since two thousand and eight, and then speaking with Mo's yesterday, I can't remember having a problem where they had to come back and correct an area or. The areas that they fixed in two thousand and eight. If we haven't repaved them now. There wouldn't be an issue with them. There hasn't been an issue of any of the work that they've done. They do excellent work for us at an excellent price. And we'd like to continue this agreement. For fifty thousand dollars.
Questions?
Not here.
I move, we approve the request from Public Works to enter to kind of paving in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for the pave two thousand twenty two localized repairs, face three project as described by Tiger. Second here. All in favor?
Thank you.
Maple Street.
Maple Street. So previous, we came forward with a. Request to enter into a contract in partnership with the library with for with their contractor, their site contractor, Dalling Construction. And in working through the sidewalk. Installation there, there's a substantial amount of regrading work that has to happen on mains on Maple Street between Main Street and South Avenue. So we met with the, we met with representatives from Turner Construction to go over the scope of work. The library will be responsible for two thirds of the street, the grading and repaving, and the town is responsible for one third of the street. We have some additional sidewalk work that we would like to have performed. In the area adjacent to it, just at the Center School lot, specifically around the 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 pay. Kiosk. So we're adding a ten thousand dollar item, but in essence, the. The larger contract is with the library. It's it's a little over a hundred thousand dollars of work, thirty seven thousand of it will be on the town side. So the combination of the two. The paving work and the sidewalk work is forty seven thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, forty cents. I added a contingency of seventy one fifty for a total of fifty four, seven fifty, forty. And this, in essence, will get us. Maple Street paved from Main Street to South Avenue. The sidewalk's done on both sides. Nice connectivity from the Center School lot to the library. So when the library opens in February, all this will be completed, and it'll be a nice gateway into into the new library.
So remind me, the two thirds, one third split, was that pursuant to the MOU?
No, that had to do specifically with the amount of work that was actually there that was wound up being their responsibility, since they had to change some of the grades on the sidewalk, then they had to change the grades of the roadway. If they change a grade of their sidewalk, then change the grade of our roadway, so that's on you. If they change a grade of their sidewalk, then change the grade of our roadway. So that's on you. You know, so approximately two thirds of the, the roadwork fell to the library itself as their responsibility. The remaining one third, I could have either gone out to our contractor for it, but it was, that would have been foolish to have him try to do a hundred and fifty feet of roadway while there's another contractor in the middle of it. So he said, just have him do end to ends. And, um, he gave us a price for the entire stretch of work and then we divided it into thirds.
Okay, makes sense.
Any further questions, Kathleen?
So, so why wasn't a hundred percent? I, I don't think I understand that. Isn't all of, you're trying to do all of Maple Street. What portion are you saying is the, the town's responsibility?
The lower third, the lower third from Main Street, um, up to basically the, the previous pedestrian crossing was approximately our responsibility. And then the grade change at that point became the library's responsibility.
And Maple, Maple Street had been disturbed by, uh, by the gas line. Is Eversource paying any of this or?
No, because this was a road that we hadn't paved prior. So this would have been the town's responsibility a hundred percent.
Okay.
I move, we approve this request from Public Works to enter to a contract with Dolling Construction for fifty four thousand seven fifty forty, which includes a contingency as described by Tiger for the, uh, upgrading, regrading and repaving of Maple Street from Maine to South Avenue for the, for the new library, uh, opening in February. Second.
Second.
For the discussion, all in favor, I. Okay, I'm getting tired of this. Tiger has to do all these items.
About two of us. Um, so this next is, uh, uh, sidewalks on Park Street. This is a small stretch of sidewalk where, uh, where so the sidewalks on Park Street that were part of the view constructions, they were, that was placed on, on Park Street in front of the view. It stopped at the Richmond Hill intersection at the edge of the property line with the view and it doesn't continue to, uh, to Maple Street. So this is the piece, this last piece, um, to connect the sidewalks at the view with the sidewalks, um, that continue on Park Street. So this, so this small stretch, we had originally designed it back when the view, um, was installed, except for there was a telephone pole in the way that, um, had not only Eversource, but every, every, um, communication service as well, including a, uh, including Verizon, um, and we had it, we until everything was removed from those poles to be able to relocate the pole. So we had a three-year hiatus in, in waiting for, uh, cooperation from the utilities. We went out to, uh, Peter Lonnie Incorporated and asked him for an itemized list of, uh, work and unit pricing. Uh, Joe did a really nice job. Joe Zagrenski did a nice job on, on, um, evaluating this. He came forward with a price of thirty one thousand seven fifteen. It should be noted that about thirteen thousand dollars of it is sidewalk work, eighteen thousand dollars of it is a retaining wall that has to be run since the grade is changing. So it's a very small amount of sidewalk work, a little bit more of a retaining walls, um, but in speaking with the condo co- uh, complex next door, we were able to point across the street at Richmond Hill to the work that Peter had done on those walls. And they very much liked them. So they were in, in, in agreement with, uh, not only the contractor, but the type of work that he performed. Uh, so we'd like to go forward with this contract at thirty one thousand seven fifteen. I added a fifteen percent contingency for forty eight hundred dollars for a total of thirty six five one five. In evaluating his price, I looked back to, uh, not only the three, um, projects that he did this year that were competitively bid and whereby he was substantially lower than his competition, but I also went back to, for competitive pricing in twenty nineteen and twenty seventeen. Um, specifically to get retaining wall pricing and to see that he was not only substantially lower than, than his, uh, competition, but he had in essence, held his price, um, throughout, um, from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty two. So we think it's an excellent price. We'd like to go forward with the work and hopefully complete it this season.
This is an important safety project because, uh, not only of the view, but also the condominium uh, complex just beyond the view where they need to be able to walk safely to the train and not have to cross busy, uh, Park Street. So.
Correct. We extended the sidewalk right to the edge of their, of their staircase. So it does connect with that, that complex as well.
Okay. Questions?
None here.
Thank you.
I, just, just one that's actually not, not about the Park Street sidewalk, but just, um, Tiger, maybe at our future meeting, if you could just comment where we are in terms of the sidewalks, twenty twenty two project, are we halfway there, ninety five percent of the way there in terms of your overall budget?
Okay, I can, uh, yeah, well.
And just, you know, how many other projects? Is this for calendar year twenty twenty two or?
I call them. I, yeah, the, when I, when I have run that, it's, it's a calendar year. So I can keep track of, oh, in twenty twenty two, not fiscal. Fiscal is very different since it approaches to.
Uh, right.
But, uh, we have
Okay.
The fiscal twenty three budget, um, what in essence went to almost one project, which is the, uh, Own Oak Ridge project from Heritage Hill to Parade Hill that you approved previously. But the state asked us to delay that until next spring to not start the project, uh, in the fall. So they asked us to wait. So that in essence, that, that, uh, that budget, that, that entire allotted amount of that budget is going towards that project, which will start in April.
What, why did they ask us to wait?
Uh, because they don't like the disturbance throughout the, the winter. So they asked that, yeah, we would have been halfway done or, you know, a third of the way done. And they were saying that, you know, then we would be working through the winter. They do, they asked us not to work through the winter.
This, this from the same state that didn't finish one twenty three.
Correct. Yes. But, you know, the, uh, in essence, we thought it was a, a good idea as well because we were able to get some of these other projects that had, um, that were also in the queue for quite some time to fruition. So, uh, they're working on Gower Road right now between Southwood and South School. That'll be done within the next couple of weeks and they can jump to here. So we were able to complete some, several smaller projects that instead of this one larger project. So I think it was a good trade.
Good.
And it's always good to keep them on our good side.
For the questions, I move, we approve this request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Peter Lonnie Inc. for a total of thirty six thousand five fifteen for the, uh, sidewalk on Park Street from Richmond Hill. No.
Oh, it is, it is. It's basically from Richmond Hill.
It goes beyond.
It's just at the, at the intersection of Richmond Hill.
To Maple Street. Okay, second.
Second here.
All in favor, I. That's unanimous.
So this last item is a purchase of granite.
Second last item, we have to add the.
I, for me, thank God, um, it's the, uh, oh, do I have another one? That's right. So I got two left. Sorry. The, um, thank you, Tucker. The, uh, so this next is a materials purchase of granite curbing, um, this, uh, it looks like it's a new vendor, but in essence, it's not Swenson Stone and North Carolina Granite were both bought by the same conglomerate Polycor. Uh, so when I reached out to North Carolina for a quote, they said that they would be delivered from our, their, their, uh, sister company, Swenson Stone, which is in North, uh, which is in New Hampshire, which is actually quite nice to have a piece of the White Mountains coming to, uh, to New Canaan. Um, our other, the other supplier that we usually go to, William Stone, actually had no material for sale. Um, at this juncture, they had five inch, um, with granite, not six inch, which is our standard. Um, but Grant, uh, Swenson Stone, the, uh, the price is very comparable between the two. And, um, we'd like to go forward with this pro, this, uh, purchase for twenty three thousand three eighty for materials that we'll need for the project that was just, uh, detailed.
Any questions on this?
None here.
I move, we approve the request from Public Works to enter into contract with S- S- Svenson, Swenson Stone. And the amount of twenty three thousand three eighty for the purchase of granite curbing is described by Tiger. Second. Second.
Second here.
All in favor, I. Is that unanimous?
I think she's frozen.
He's frozen.
Nope.
Well, it's got two out of one, two out of three. So we'll go, we'll go on until she unfreezes. Um, the blue stone walkways.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this next is a an additional work, um, required to complete the Waviny House Blue Stone Walkway project with, uh, Fortino Escalante. This is a, um, fifty fifty split with the, uh, with the conservancy. Um, in essence, what happened is we, we looked at all the granite curb, um, that was adjacent to, uh, the, all the blue stone walkway. And some of it wasn't in alignment, some of it wasn't to grade. And we felt that we get a much better product by, uh, having them actually reset all of those stones. I put a picture in the, in the memo, just so you could see that the, the, the stone itself is about two feet to three feet deep. It's not a, it's not an easy product. It's not an easy project to do. Um, but Fortino, Fortino came through with a very nice price to, uh, to do, utilize this work. We had some additional work that we liked, that we added as far as conduits, um, for not only irrigation, but if we wanted to go towards lighting, um. So we have a series of those spread out throughout each one of the, the, the walkways so that we don't have to disturb the walkway at the end. So in essence, um, all the work combined, the additional work that, that, um, that we prescribed came to, uh, thirty two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. We already had a contingency of thirteen thousand six hundred. So if I deduct that existing contingency out, um, the additional money is needed for the project is nineteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. The conservancy is on board for a fifty fifty split. And, um, they're very much in favor of, uh, of going forward in this route. And, uh, we'd like to add this to, um, Fortino's contract.
You have to go and see this to believe it. And this is a wonderful project for the, with the conservancy. So.
Yeah, they look beautiful.
And we've essentially almost agreed to a fifty fifty split on, on the projects we share. And anyway, so any questions about this, uh, additional item? Did we lose Kathleen?
It seems like we did.
Okay, we can continue with two of us. Um, I move, questions?
None here.
I move, we approve this request from Public Works and the Way Any Park Conservancy to, uh, amend the existing contract with Fortino Escalante to, for the, uh, Blue Stone Walkway work is described by Tiger for a total of nineteen thousand one fifty pursuant to the complicated math that is in.
Tried to detail it out where you see exactly where it was, but you know.
Second.
Walk you through it if you need.
Just second. Second, Nick.
Second.
Uh, oh, she's back. Kathleen, we're doing the Blue Stone Walkway. Um, item, which, um, do you want to hear about it again? Did you, did you hear?
You're muted, Kathleen. Okay, I, I got it. And can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure. So we, Tiger described this item on the Blue Stone Walkway, the item we added to the agenda. Do you want to hear any part of it again?
Heard it. And now I heard it all. We're all set.
Okay, thank you. Where was I? Did we move it?
I don't think you moved yet. I think you were waiting.
I thought I moved.
We need a vote.
Need a vote.
All in favor, I. That's unanimous. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stay there for a second though, Tiger. You might be asked questions, but on the contracts, any, any, uh, any, uh, any questions about the contracts under ten thousand dollars?
None here.
Kathleen? Legal fees. Any questions? I will, we approve the, uh, legal fees on the, on the tablets.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
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 Tax over payments, one real estate and several automobile. Any questions or I move, we approve the tax over payments?
Second here.
All in favor, I.
I.
I. Um, so we have a additional item, two items actually, um, which I, I, uh, suggest before we go into, well, we're gonna do this. Um, we can do brief se- selecting comments and then take up the, uh, their own park item and then possibly go into executive session on the, on the final item. But, on, uh.
We also want to add the, um.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, let's, let's talk about the part-time employees now. We added that to the agendas. Um, so Kathleen, I, I sent you a email, um, with the town attorney's advice. Um, you know, the, what does selectmen's, uh, powers derive from the procurement process? And the, uh, town attorney has advised that there really is no provision for, uh, approving part-time employees. Um, generally, full-time employees are added through the budget process, but, um, uh, so, you know, if we want to talk about a revised policy or a new policy, um, consistent with the town charter and, uh, ordinances, we can do that, but, um, uh, you know, as I said, you know, we have, we, we have two or three hundred part-time employees in the course of the year. And it really isn't practical to, uh, have the board of selectmen review who the lifeguards are at the pool and the, the, uh, election workers and the town clerk, you know, we just, I, I don't really see the point. Um, I don't quite, I approve them, but quite honestly, I don't pay a lot of attention to dozens of employees that we hire part-time. So I don't know, I don't know what your thoughts.
So. Sure. Thank you. And thanks for that memo, uh, Kevin. I, I differentiate what you're referring to as really, uh, you said part-time, but they're really temporary employees. They have a start date and a finish date. Uh, and even under those conditions, we have in the past received, uh, certainly during, uh, Steve Banco's tenure, a list of everybody who was coming on for summer employment for the Parks Department. I don't believe we, we reviewed that this year, uh, with John, but certainly in the past, you've always had a list of those employees that were coming on. But to your point, that's always a, a big list. And we don't see the, for instance, the, um, the part-timers or the temporary workers that come on during election season. And that's because most of those, uh, temporary workers are under the, uh, contract limit of, uh, the ten thousand that we or it's brought before, um, the board of selectmen. And so I really wanted to discuss not about particularly an individual who's been, uh, hired as a part-time, but really about positions that are part-time and permanent part-time positions, as it has been in our policy in the past, to actually bring those forward in front of the board and the selectmen for any permanent full-time and any permanent part-time positions. And so I don't think that we have to revise our process. I think we should continue it. If you want to codify it, that's certainly fine. Um, and, but I do think that um, we should go forward and go back. In fact, I had asked for a list of those part-time positions that we have, permanent part-time positions that we have, um, and that just to, to verify, just go back and say, have we approved them? As we do the full-time employees and, uh, remain as part of our, uh, review and approval process by the board of selectmen.
Your thoughts?
Any other thoughts?
Uh, I, I guess a question and maybe Cheryl, this is for you, um. What is the definition of a permanent? Part-time employee? Over thirty hours.
I can't hear Cheryl.
Yeah.
Well, you know, it's a bit of a misnomer to say permanent part-time because technically all per, all part-time employees are at-will employees. So I, I don't know.
As our full-time, right, as our full-time.
That's my permanent part-time employees, especially someone newly hired, who we actually may, maybe want to, uh, see whether they work out um, with a six-month.
They, they all, same thing, part-time and full-time employees. We have six months, right? The same thing.
Yeah, and, and we're not talking about lifeguards. I think that you know, the temporary, I, I think this is, you know, the, the distinction is real, uh, between, you know, those two, those two subsets.
Also, just Kevin, I just, uh, maybe further clarify, so is this particular part-time position that, you know, came up to the town council and so forth? Is that, is or any other part-time positions in, uh, town government? Do they have any benefits at all?
Well, I'm not, you know, we're not, we're not going to discuss individual cases here today. That's partly why I didn't give you a list, Kathleen. You know, I think the, uh.
Yeah, no, just asking about positions, just positions in general. Do we have any
In general.
Benefits that are given.
In general, part-time employees don't have benefits. Right? But there are unique situations we've had where, um, uh, because of the skill involved or because of the relationship with other parties that, um, we negotiate benefits in lieu of sa- salary in lieu of compensation. So I think, uh, again, I think, you know, I, I will talk further to the town attorney and, and Cheryl about whether it's appropriate to develop a policy here. But, you know, I personally, I think the procurement process, which i- is the board of selectmen's responsibility under the charter. Um, uh, we have a policy on ten thousand dollars for me to approve. I mean, actually, given today's agenda, I, I think we ought to maybe think about increasing that to twenty thousand dollars because we end up talking about a lot of items that are not a lot of, uh, controversy, but the reality is, um.
It used to be five thousand, just for the record.
Yeah, but you know, the Board of Education spends, uh, tens of millions of dollars without any kind of what if, what if education approval of taxpayer dollars. So I think.
That's the Board of Education.
Well, yeah, yeah, it's in terms of, I, I don't know what we think we're accomplishing because I, I think ninety nine point nine percent of the time.
It's just oversight, Kevin.
Well, you know, that's not the purpose of our charter, to have oversight. The purpose of our charter is to have oversight over procurement. Employment is a different matter, and I think we uh, you know, so I'll I'll discuss with the town attorney and Cheryl whether we should uh, put forth a uh, a policy, but right now I'm skeptical about the idea of uh.
Okay. Kevin, are we, we're still approving, the Board of Selectmen, I think you would agree, approves all full-time employees. Is that correct?
Absolutely. No question about that. No question about that. You know, I.
Delighted to hear you say.
This is partly from my having lunch with my co uh, colleagues at uh, you know, other towns. Um, and I consisted with how their Board of Selectmen and their charter work, you know, I um, they um, I don't think we we have the right to just amend our policy on something that our our charter documents already give us guidance.
No, we're we're not amending it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not amending it. We 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 approved the position of gardener. I think it was last summer, uh, that was a part-time position that you recommended. We approved.
I brought that forth as a PR matter. You know, I wanted to show what we're doing to improve Waviney. Not because it's required. So anyway.
You brought that forth as a PR?
Yeah, yeah, it's very, what we're doing at Waviney is outstanding, and I think we, you know, we really need to continue.
Makes a lot of sense to.
Make people want to give to the Waviney.
PR that in that in that in that form.
Well, again, what the Waviney Conservancy is doing at Waviney is outstanding, and we need.
I don't think anybody thinks anything other than that, Kevin. I just think it's interesting that you would bring, you know, your concern about time and with respect to the agenda, and you bring an item that's uh, for our approval, it's it's just PR.
Okay, exactly, Nick. Right, so anyway, so I'll I'll be happy to talk to the town attorney and Cheryl about this further, but I get, we have to, we have to conform to our our charter documents and uh.
And and stick with our practice that we've always had, so.
Well, again, you're you're distinguishing something I don't think is accurate, Kathleen, but we can, we can talk about it further. Anyway, um, beyond that, we have um, two items with the police to deal with today. And um, I would make a couple of brief comments um, about um, before we go to those police matters. First of all, the town council will be meeting tomorrow night um, on the uh, West Cell Tower. Um, as you know, there's a site visit one o'clock that you've been invited to today. Um, you were invited to the B and Z site visit as well. Um, as I've said before, there's a long process to go through with this West Cell Tower. And um, uh, and then uh, and on that topic, I want to um, address a matter that came up last Friday. Uh, last Friday morning, I stepped out of my uh, actually, the bathroom into the hallway outside my office and encountered Michael Dinen uh, in Selectman Williams. Um, I attempted to start an intelligent conversation with Mike Dinen about the uh, item he reported last Friday morning about Centerline Solutions, which, as you know, Nick, we hired in two thousand fourteen to do a thirty thousand dollar project for us to uh, analyze independently our uh, cellular service in town. Uh, Mike Dinen reported Cell- Centerline Solutions had gone bankrupt. The reality was, I was in touch with John Keating, who came to New Canaan with a a crew and uh, did that study back then. John Keating is still in business, RF engineer in Colorado. He will speak tomorrow night to the town council. Um, but was what was disappointing, and you you witnessed the whole conversation. Michael Dinen could not have an intelligent conversation about a serious matter. Um, and what ensued was uh, two very inappropriate and really outrageous remarks to me by Michael Dinen. Um, which angered me and I uh, raised my voice. Uh, I asked him to get out of my face. And um, I want to apologize to the town employees today who overheard that and a few visitors in the uh, meeting room adjacent. Um, never before in five years have I raised my voice in this building, did I know so? Anyway, uh, but the point is Michael Dinen's reporting on a very serious matter is something he should be careful about. And I would just emphasize how serious this West Cell Tower is to the town of Canaan. So with that, uh, do you have any comments, Kathleen or Nick?
None here.
No.
Okay, chief and uh, deputy chief, Andrew, if you want to join us for the discussion. First of all, let's handle the uh, the Irwin Park item first. This one, there's no need to executive, to do executive session. We're adding.
First of all, good morning and uh, thanks for your time today and us being so patient with you and you being so patient with us. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
So would you like to proceed with uh, item three?
Irwin Park first.
Uh, sure.
Right.
Um, and thanks to Tucker too. She's been a great help in helping to convey information and suggested that I prepare the memo that you folks have outline these two items. So that item is related to two light posts in the front parking lot of Irwin Park. We have had some uh, criminal incidents there, one recently about a month ago. Um, and some residents have expressed concern, and that is in line with um, the folks that come from out of state and commit crimes in our parks. So certainly installing these light posts will help, and also we intend to install cameras within the light posts. I've spoken with uh, Sal, Chris Kaiser, John Howe, Tiger's been involved. Um, and this is in line with our overall security initiative plan that was approved by the Police Commission, approved by you folks and approved by um, the Board of Finance.
Any questions on this item? Kathleen? Can you hear the?
Oh, no, she's still.
Yeah, I'm still here. Yep, I'm here. No, I'm here.
Any questions on the Irwin Park?
So I don't know if you want to add it, but there's there's two, there's two actually costs. There's a one, two, seven, eight, five, the Hussey Brothers, and then there's a forty-seven hundred to Darian Electric that Tiger was kind enough to get a quote for. So there's two parts of that work, and then the last part will be our IT department will install the cameras there.
And chief, we had, I think, appropriated.
Yes, funding. There's there's a, there was two hundred thousand that was available in a revenue line.
Right.
And I believe we've spent to date around uh, sixteen thousand or so. So there's plenty of money there and uh, keep in mind, this is a long deliberate process. Um, this is a little more complicated than some of the other improvements we've made. Um, but you'll you'll see other similarly complicated projects that are moved forward in in the parks and in the center.
I appreciate the deliberation because I think we want to get it right. So you guys have done a great job.
Thank you.
Um, and I'm I'm, you know, a hundred and fifty percent behind this uh, as 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 much as I can be because I think it, you know, it speaks to, you know, we know there's been an increase in crime in New Canaan and other parts of Fairfield County, the whole state of Connecticut, and this is one way we can we can address that, and I think we'll give comfort to to some of our, most of our residents, hopefully.
Yeah, and I also want to highlight the work of our our officers, our detectives, that our officers initially respond and gather information, then usually a detective will follow up and gather information, and this is a Fairfield County statewide issue. Um, and we've found that technology and data and video is very helpful in the investigations. Um, sometimes we get uh, we run it down and there's no one to point to. And other times, we're able to secure arrest warrants and arrest people from out of state that are committing these crimes in our town. And uh, like I mentioned, a very high-profile resident contacted me and said she was very concerned about uh, having her vehicle parked in the park there because we did have an attempted break-in there.
Sure.
And uh, the good news is the car was locked. Um, and these these folks will break a window and or they'll try to jimmy a lock to try to get in the vehicle. They think there's something valuable in there. Um, so once again, the message is lock your car and take all valuables out of your car, and it's likely you won't become a victim, but this is certainly going to help us after the fact with investigations and hopefully, um, if these criminals are watching today, maybe they are, um, maybe they'll stay away from the canyon.
Okay, I'm, uh, can, any further questions, Kathleen?
Um, just, just a few. Um, two, two light posts, is that enough for the parking area that we're talking about?
Yes, um, the two light posts in the in the offset corners are the initial plan. Um, there there's some semantics related to, or actually some technology related to distance between um, where the cameras need to be and the light posts. So this is the first part. And we'll evaluate this. We believe that'll give sufficient coverage for that lot. Um, and and like I mentioned, there'll be likely successive requests for approval related to some improvements in Irwin, Waviney and the center of town.
Okay, thank you, chief. And it's any of this light, does it uh, carry over to the street, any sort of resident issues? Are they going to be seeing lights? Coming off of the parking lot?
No, I don't, we'll put some uh, the timers on or the ones that that measure the light and shut off automatically and on. Um, but if you get any complaints from the residents, we'll we'll address that, but I don't believe it'll be uh, that significant that it's going to bother the residents.
Okay, thank you.
I move we approve this request from uh, the Police Department to enter to a contract with Hussey Brothers. Uh, actually, you're saying there's twelve thousand seventy-five is on the agenda. You're saying there's an additional item that I'll prove under ten thousand dollars?
Yeah, yeah, it's forty-seven hundred to Darian Electric.
Right, for um, for the installation of two light posts in the front of a parking lot of Irwin Park as described by the chief. Uh, second.
Second here.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. That is, so the final item, and I'd like to go into executive session about this because I don't know anything about it and and uh, it's a different kind of security issue than uh, cameras. Um, so uh, the item on the agenda is possible executive session on the license plate readers. Um, and uh, so I move we go into executive session when we come out.
Do you believe that we should go into executive session for this?
I, my personal opinion and my professional opinion is no, it's not necessary. Um, this was a capital item that was approved. Um, this just happens to be the level of detail related to that, a capital item that was approved by all the boards and the Police Commission.
And I think we say strategic locations were not necessarily.
My intent is not to discuss strategic locations in public. If if that's your desire.
No, not specific locations.
Yeah.
I I'm, the term strategic locations in and of itself, I don't think is problematic.
That's right.
Unless you disagree, I I differ.
Yeah, and the reality is I don't decide where the locations are necessarily. It's our detectives that are working with an engineer from the company because they're solar and they're cellular. So there's certain locations where there's good coverage related to solar and cellular, and other locations aren't good. Um, but there's, it's a sprinkling throughout town to have a good coverage area. And uh.
You know more about this than I do?
Uh, I I don't know what you know, so I I I can't, I can't answer your question. Um, I mean, this is a serious matter. It's not a PR stunt. Uh, um, and uh, you know, I think it's important that um, the folks in town understand that we are purchasing a number of license plate readers using the funds that heretofore have been provided to the PD. Um, and they're going to be around town. We're not going to necessarily tell tell you where they are, but they're in quote-unquote strategic locations.
Yeah, precisely. And you know, keep in mind, around a month ago, our great work by our officers, it was highlighted in the press. Around three AM, officers were following a couple of cars that were moving close together. Typically, that involves some kind of criminal behavior at three AM in a certain area. And the good news is these folks turned down a dead-end street and bailed out of the cars. They ended up being unreported stolen vehicles with a loaded gun in one of the cars. And in fact, one of the gentlemen that we arrested that night, I think there was five, two juveniles and three adults, um, was just arrested in Newark for shooting, firing shots off. Um, so that tells you how dangerous some of these people are. So there's no doubt this data is going to help us solve crimes. And like I said, if some of these folks are listening today, um, maybe they'll stay away from the canyon, knowing that we're going to have uh, these these readers out there gathering data and uh, helping us aggressively investigate these crimes that are occurring in our town.
Anyway, I move to go into executive session. Uh, Kathleen? Or Nick, do you have a second?
Is there any reason why we're not just doing it publicly?
Well, again, I, security matters, I I have a number of questions that I would not like to discuss in public, and I also think uh, you know, if I I'm not approved.
I'll see, if you have questions that you feel, I'll 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 second your.
Yeah, I mean, I think motion. We should, we we should have our questions answered on an item before we uh, so uh, second, all in favor of going into executive session? Aye.
Aye. Who are we inviting in?
Well, before, well, uh, Andrew, Paul's just here. Um, Greg, why don't you leave? Tiger, you're welcome to stay because you obviously the uh, and Pam obviously has to stay for the.
Come on, Sean, stay on, Kevin.
Anybody else on remotely? Tucker, you can say.
So give us a minute to uh, remove people, please.
When we come out of executive session, we'll vote on this item. So and it'll be just a vote and not nothing, no further. Just. Already coming back in? So um, we come out of executive session at ten fourteen, we have one item to vote on, as I indicated before, when executive session. This is number twenty-three on our agenda, license plate readers. Um, and um, I move we approve the request from the Police Department to enter to recurring annual contract with Flock Group and the amount of thirty-two thousand dollars for for year one. The project entails the installation and maintenance of ten fixed license plate readers in strategic locations in New Canaan. Do I have a second?
Second here.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you, chief.
Thank you for your time.
Chiefs, thank you very much. Um, I move we adjourn at ten fifteen.
Second here.
All in favor? Have fun in age, Kathleen.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks. Okay, see you next week.
You.